It's time to get going here. I'm gonna call the, let's start out with the public hearings. First, we're gonna have the 2016 budget hearing. And as we get started with this, I'd like to ask Ted to kinda explain the purpose and the process of hearings, and maybe that'll bring some questions in your mind. So Ted, if you would, please.
Alright, thanks. We do have three public hearings this morning, or this evening. The first is the hearing on the budget. Sherri, our business manager, will lead us through that. Public hearing on the budget comes every year, and the purpose of that is to let the public know and to raise questions about the items in the budget. The board is required to have a public hearing, and then after that, can adopt the budget. The other two public hearings have to do with the proposed building project. The 1028 public hearing is required any time improvements to public buildings in excess of $1 million are being proposed by the governing agency. There, as you've read in the Sentinel and heard on the radio and other places, the board is proposing as much as $9.9 million worth of improvements to the buildings. That therefore requires a public hearing. Purpose is to prove the public need. So you'll hear from our architect, from our financial analyst, and from our bond counsel on the process and the policies, and why the proposal is here. Among the people here today are Bob Kennedy and Carrie Weaver, who are on the Building Corporation. They are two of the three directors of the Building Corporation, and they will be involved in making critical decisions about what goes on. The third is a hearing on preliminary determination to enter a lease. Columbia School is currently owned by the School Corporation. The Building Corporation will borrow money. They will then buy the building from the School Corporation and prepare the improvements. The School Corporation will use the money for the improvements of the other buildings, and that will allow all of the actions to take place. Anytime a proposed lease of more than $5,000 per year is proposed by the school board, it requires that the public be notified and given an opportunity to be heard. As I said, the first three items, well, first we'll do the budget, then we'll go to the 1028 hearing. We'll hear from the architect, Terry Thornsberry, then the financial analyst, Kirk Fletcher, and then the bond counsel, Randy Repola. Once they have made statements, and the public's invited to make statements for up to three minutes per stake, then the board will close the meeting and then go on to the meeting, at which time they are being asked to take action on matters that are being discussed. Okay? Any questions among the board?
Okay, thank you Ted. I'm gonna start, I'm gonna read the official notice to start here. Notice is hereby given to taxpayers of Rochester Community School Corporation, Fulton County, Indiana, that the proper officers of Rochester Community Schools will conduct a public hearing on the year 2016 budget. Following this meeting, any 10 or more taxpayers may object to a budget, tax rate, or tax levy by filing objection petition with the proper officers of Rochester Community Schools, not more than seven days after the hearing. The objection petition must identify the provisions of the budget, tax rate, or tax levy to which the taxpayers object. If a petition is filed, Rochester Community Schools shall adopt with the budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and testimony presented. Following the aforementioned hearing, the proper officers of Rochester Community Schools will meet to adopt the following budget. So Sherri, if you would then.
Our budget estimates for 2016 are, our rainy day, $70,554. Our general fund, $12,298,694. Twelve million. Twelve million. Sorry about that, thank you, Jenna. Our debt service is $3,382,287. Our capital projects is $1,725,000. Our transportation is $898,263. And our bus replacement is $345,000, for a total estimate of $18,719,788. And the meeting to adopt this is at our regular meeting on October 19th, 2015, at 6:30 in this building.
Okay, thank you. We have it up on the screen now. Am I in the way? Just tell me, Doug. I'll give you a minute to kinda look things over. Okay, are there any questions or concerns? Board or public? Okay. If not, we'll close that budget hearing and move on to the 1028 hearing. Terry? Terry, please.
Over the past few months, we've been working on generating a list of potential proposed projects for another round of bond projects. And working together with youth school board members, superintendent in facilities, Jim Swink and others, we were able to generate this list. And I'm gonna go through each building, and Riddle and Columbia are combined because it's pretty much the same list. Again, I'm Terry Thornsberry, Varian Architect and Designer of Fort Wayne. Been working over here for the last five or six years or so on various projects, including this building that we're in as well. As I said, we'll start with Riddle and Columbia. And to begin with, we're gonna talk about chilled water plant, and here's some pictures. It's hard to tell everything there, but we've got equipment that's dated and in need of either repair or replacement. Jim and his guys do their best to repair it and maintain it and keep it running, but a lot of times, the equipment gets to the end of its life, and it doesn't make sense to continue to try to repair something that's outdated. And we can install new systems that are more efficient and hopefully save money in the long run. Hot water plant, same thing. Again, it's just age of equipment and a need to update and get more efficient systems in place so that hopefully be easier for Jim to maintain long-term and also save money in the long run. Alright, watch it. Unit ventilators, both Riddle and Columbia. If you're in the classrooms, there's a picture of one there at a teacher's desk, and unfortunately in that picture, there's a lot of stuff on top of that unit ventilator, so it can't work as well as it should with stuff on top of it. But that's basically the mechanical unit for the classroom. It sits in the corner. It's horizontal. That's a picture of the inside of it there on the right, in which that should have condensation in it, which should drain in this direction, but unfortunately, in the case of the one we took apart, it drains in the opposite direction, so it doesn't even drain where it's supposed to. Difficult part is that Jim and his guys can't get to it to maintain it. You have to disassemble it to maintain it. It wasn't designed to be able to easily clean and maintain. And those school board members that saw this when we took it apart, saw what I'm talking about.
To be specific, the repurposed units, you'd have to drill those out, thinking it didn't work behind it. But I know Jim and his people are working on that too, but it was.
They are. And what happens is this, that is hooked to that chiller unit that we showed, this, then piping comes inside the building, ties into the system, and that should be blowing cool air, which helps dehumidify the space, pulls, much like your air conditioner home, pulls that condensate out of the air and drains it outside. But if it's not working properly, all those systems together, you get humidity issues in the building, and we'll show some images of that here in a second.
Terry, what were those units put in?
Those are original to the building, correct? Those unit ventilators are original?
No, they're put in 94.
Those are 94. The chill, what about the chiller system, the chiller plant?
The boilers, the chilled water was put in 94, the unit ventilators in 94, the chiller and boilers were 1994.
Okay. So, and a lot of us think of 1994 as my company, but it's starting to add up. And emergency signs and electrical issues, we do have some dated exit signs in, like in this room, we have wall pecks and strobes and other things, and a lot of the classrooms don't have that, or don't have the modern compliant exit sign, so we wanna deal with some of that as well. Compliant gymnasium bleachers, there's no ADA designated areas inside the, for the bleachers in either school, so we wanna remedy that situation and put modern bleacher systems in there as well. Exterior ceiling caulking, this is just some examples where if you don't maintain the building, you get these small cracks and openings in the building. Well, those things lead to bigger problems down the road. You actually get water inside there in the wintertime, as it can go through a freestyle cycle, you can get water in there, and then it actually can crack the brick or the masonry and cause bigger problems, so we just wanna avoid that. Classroom ceiling tile, if you could see these pictures better, in here, ceiling tile, if you look at them, are all perfectly flat because the HVAC system in here does a good job of dehumidifying the space. In the classrooms, we don't have that, so a lot of the ceiling tile drooped. And that picture on the right, unfortunately you can't tell, actually was the day this past summer when we had condensation from pipes above that ceiling. We were driven on the ceiling tile, which were causing them to continue to warp.
Is, with the new chillers and the air conditioner, new boilers, will that fix along that problem as well?
It will, but the combination of things, and I'm gonna try to cover.
Sorry.
Good question. The HVAC system would help dehumidify the space. We have to deal with some other issues, and this is one of them. This was Riddle from the summer when we took the soffit out, which is actually transite, which has asbestos in it. So remedying that issue, dealing with exterior lighting, but you can barely tell in the picture, there's insulation stuffed into a void at the top of the wall with the roof deck. That void allows hot moist air to get above the ceiling. That then can condensate and cause problems above the ceiling, so we need to deal with a multitude of things. And so this is all, all this builds up, all these pictures build up to the big problems overall. So this is a picture inside the building, and if you can see this shiny glare on the pipes on the left, that's condensation on an insulated pipe. There's so much moist, warm air above that ceiling that it's condensating on a chilled pipe. So if it's able to condensate on that chilled pipe, the efficiency of that chilled pipe decreases. So we lose the capacity in the system overall to cool the water, get to those unit ventilators, dehumidify the air, and all of these things just continue to build up. And also, if you look, there's insulation laying on top of that ceiling. So at some point, insulation was put on top of the ceiling, but we don't want it there because what it's doing is we have insulation on top of the ceiling, we have insulation on the roof, we now trap that hot air in a void that's not conditioned and doesn't ventilate, so the air can't get out. So that hot moist air stays trapped up there, causes these problems, ceiling tile get wet, you have a multitude of things that can happen from there. Exterior lighting, this is Columbia, we've already, we're already dealing with this at Riddle, but again, that white soffit is transite panels, it has asbestos in it, so we wanna get rid of that and then put new LED lighting in and improve lighting on the exterior of the building. Moving on to the middle school, gymnasium, the gymnasium lighting as well as the air handlers, the air handlers in that space are rather large and they're supported from the ceiling, and we'd like to get them out of that space to help, it would help with some sound issues, put more efficient systems in there. We'd also like to clean up the ceiling, paint it a light color, put LED lighting in there, really freshen up that whole space and make it better. That space is adjacent to the natriatorium, and you have a lot of warm air that comes out of the natriatorium, comes into that space. So if you're in that gymnasium, you'll notice that it just looks like there's a lot of dust and/or dirt on the walls and on the ceiling, and that's due to the moist air that comes in there, and of course, that makes the dirt and the dust and stuff stick to the walls and stick to the ceiling and stick to everything else. So we wanna remedy all those issues. Inside the natriatorium, mechanical room, the electrical equipment closet or room, the equipment that's in there, as you can see from these pictures, is very rusted and corroded. It's in a very harsh environment with chlorine, so we want to basically update everything in this room that needs to be updated with systems that hopefully will last longer, not corrode, and try to just address as many things as we can. I know that you guys have issues with safety and other things in these spaces, and we need to address that as well at the same time. Plumbing systems, this was just an odd picture we took a couple of years ago that we realized, which one of these is ADA compliant? And the answer is, neither one of them. So one of should be a lot lower than the other one, and the other one should look like the one on the left. The one on the right's older. So we wanna update plumbing fixtures, we want to make sure that everything is ADA acceptable, so that we can, to make it compliant for everyone. Fire alarm systems for the middle school need to be updated. If you go into Riddle and Columbia, you'll now see new fire alarm systems, so the pull handles are down at the proper ADA height, and we also wanna deal with the emergency power. That's the generator there on the right. And we just wanna update that equipment, make sure it's sized properly, make sure it operates properly, and works when you need it. Gymnasium bleachers for the middle school, same scenario as we talked about for Riddle and Columbia, wanting to update those, make them ADA compliant as well. As you can see, if those, and those of you who've been in there, you pull those out, handrails, steps, I mean, there's a lot of things that, simple things that need to be there to make them safer and also make them compliant. This is some examples of water that's gotten into a masonry wall. You'll see what it does, it can shear right through brick and crack. And also, we wanna deal with caulking and other things to make sure everything's sealed up tight the way it should be. High school, this is chilled water pump that's inside, it goes actually up to the tower that's on top of the building. It's hard to tell in this picture, but the floor is wet, and it's because the pump back in the corner, which is the picture on the left, is completely shot. It's not something where you can simply replace the seals, it needs an entire new pump. The red pump is a newer pump that's next to it, but back when that was done, couldn't afford to do both of them, so you do what you can, and now it's time to fix the other pump. Air handlers, similar to Riddle and Columbia, we also, in this case, we have air handler terminals in the classrooms, and we want to do the same thing. Update that. Picture on the left are the big air handlers for those of us who've been down in the lower level or the basement of the high school. And again, that floor is wet because on that day we were down there, the condensate was going, not, it was going to the drain, but the sump on the drain wasn't working, so it was all just ponding, and that's bad. So you get water then into the tunnels where the air gets distributed through the building, and a multitude of issues can happen from there. So we gotta fix not only the air handlers, but the sump, pump systems and everything associated to this equipment that's in the lower level. In that case, those air handlers are original to the building and are huge and definitely live for their life. Plumbing fixtures in the high school as well, this is an easy example, none of those faucets are ADA compliant, so we wanna update that and also make sure that one of them at least is at the proper height for ADA as well. Fire alarm system, same, as I mentioned earlier, the emergency power in the case of the high school is in much better condition because it's inside the building, but again, it's got quite bit of age, and we'd put a newer, modern system in there with electronic controls and be able to maintain and monitor it better in the long term. Roof sections for the high school. So if you look at roof sections 7, 8, and 9, those are the sections that we did last year, and actually 12, 11, 12, 13, and 14, actually, or should be yellow, the 13 and 14 aren't to the point where they need replaced yet, but they're getting close. But Jim and I actually spoke earlier today and talked about the potential of having a roof contractor come and look at it, and they may extend the existing warranty that's on it, but part of the issue with roof warranties is if you don't maintain the roof, then the warranty's not valid anymore, and they'll void the warranty. Or if you go up and modify the roof system without the roofing manufacturer's knowledge, you go up and cut a hole in it because you're adding a mechanical unit, but they don't know about it, they can void, they can void the warranty for just about any reason. But we would potentially, in the case of 11, 12, 13, and 14, have them inspected, and maybe, as I, Jim and I talked about, have them freshened up. But the rest of the building that is in red needs to be replaced. That's the same roof system that's on, that was on 7, 8, and 9, and in many cases, multiple layers of roof. So we need to tear that down to deck, replace any damaged, corroded deck, and then re-roof, so that everything's consistent with 7, 8, and 9, and the same type of roofing system. Again, high school auxiliary gym bleachers, and as well as the visitor's side out at the football stadium, making sure that those bleachers are compliant. In the case of the ones outside the football stadium, making sure they're safe. Those are pretty rusted and got a lot of age on them, they've been around for a long time, they were relocated there, so it'd be a good thing to get those replaced and updated at the same time. Exterior ceiling and caulking, the same scenario as it said, but here's an example of the top of a masonry wall. This is up on the roof, at a higher roof section from where you're standing, and you can see the top of that wall has chunks missing out of it. That's actually a precast concrete coping that's on top of the wall, and what's happened is water's gotten into that coping, and it'll, it'll spall chunks of it off. It'll, water in it frees, and then it'll crack and break it apart. And when I was up there earlier this summer, I found chunks of it, and that's when I looked up and realized there's quite a bit of this up there. So with the replacement of the roof system, we would instead wrap all that metal, so you wouldn't have that masonry exposed anymore. That would fix the issue, make sure then we flash so that the water goes out off the face of the building. Pretty quick review of the projects that we've looked at so far. As we get in, if we move forward with projects, our next step would be to evaluate things even closer, field verify, and ensure that projects make sense. In the case of a few of those roof sections on the high school, we'd wanna evaluate those and determine, they've got some age on them, but is that a warranty replacing them, or can we basically make them a little better and get some more life out of them, and then maybe replace them in three to five years? Any questions?
We've heard of the high school being hot, being cold, and we saw the moisture in Riddle and Columbia. Is this going to fix the problem finally?
It will improve the situation because it's a multitude of things, and Riddle and Columbia are easier to explain because you saw personally the gap at the top of the wall. I don't know what the wall system is on the exterior of Riddle and Columbia. I know they've been updated and insulated, and there's newer windows and things like that. I don't know how airtight, I don't know how vapor tight, because we also wanna deal with that. When we redid the wall system on the high school, I know how that's built because I designed it, so we dealt with vapor, we dealt with thermal insulation, we tried to tighten up the building as best we can, so all those components have to work together.
Yeah, I understand. In the high school, we've talked about the air handlers being since 1965, which is four years before we put them in on the moon, and I get that. If I have my child in high school next year, and he's on the second floor, and it's 91 day in the fall, and it's 50 the next day in the fall, will they be able to change the heat and cooling appropriately so the children are comfortable?
That's the intent. We, Jim gave me a report this afternoon where they had all the little pipes and the tunnels inspected, and it looks like everything's intact. We have a few, a few minor, it looks like minor things we have to deal with, but we're still dealing with an inadequate system, a design that we would not do today. So if we're gonna simply replace those two units, then we're still dealing with, as far as we call the duct work, is the tunnels and the pipes, it's not the most efficient. So again, we're trying to improve it, but we have to design around what we're given and try to make it better. It won't fix everything, but it'll make it a lot better than it is with new controls. Jim should have better ability to control each space, because we've tried to modernize everything in that building to where he can actually see it, it's on the computer, it works right, and head in a much better direction. Right now, we were talking about it for the exhaust fans in the locker rooms. Half of it doesn't show up properly, half of it's not getting power, I mean, it's, everything's so old, it's hard to tell what was done at what point in time, what works and what doesn't.
And the last question I have is the roofs. We hear people, we've done roofs, we've done roofs, and I realize, there's how many roofs total in the Rochester Community School system, estimate?
Uh, there's 16 on the high school, and there's probably eight to 10 on the other schools.
And we have to replace it, as mentioned, but I'm glad to hear Ted point that out, you checked with Jim about the warranties. Sometimes we can extend those warranties and things like that, because there are questions amongst the community on that, so.
And one of the things Terry was alluding to with the vents and that Jim spoke about, as R and R visual did come in and run all of their cameras, and Jim and I spoke about that this afternoon, and Jim, in good faith, hasn't had a chance to review all of those, but the snippets that he's, he's looked at, there's a little bit of debris that you're finding, but nothing that's collapsed or complete closures that we've identified at this point.
Again, it was six hours, and I didn't have time to sit. When I looked at three of them, and there was some debris, but nothing serious where it would keep there from traveling through the tunnel. Now again, all they could go is, in so far, but the camera will not climb the walls. So, once I checked, it was not bad at all.
I'm gonna give that report to our engineers, they'll probably pop some popcorn and have a good time.
So you've mentioned, Terry, that at the high school, part of it is the design of the system. So is it way too expensive to just redo the system?
We talked about that as an option, and a few different things come into play. Cost, yes, for right now, if we try to do all of these projects combined under the 9.9, we wouldn't, if we focused on the high school, and you'd lose a lot of the other projects. So cost is prohibitive. The other issue becomes, how do you maintain occupancy and change all that at the same time? And it gets trickier, we're still gonna have that potential issue at Riddle and Columbia, in that we may have to rent some trailers and move some kiddos out temporarily out of classrooms while one room or two rooms are done at a time. And we do that for the high school, and it gets even harder because classrooms are bigger and more students, and it just compounds. So right now, the plan is to basically replace the big air handlers, stick with the system that's there, and look at options to improve it, but not replace it. Right now, it's cost prohibitive.
And at the elementaries, I think something we didn't mention, you know, we talked about the humidity and then the, whether it could be too cold or too hot in there too, and those air handlers on the side there are really loud. So you would replace them with something that would not be as obstructive to the learning environment?
Yes, the units we're talking about are a little quieter, but also, we would want to distribute the air better. Those come out of a unit, say the classroom is the size of this proportion of the room, it's coming out of a unit over in the corner that's maybe six to eight feet long, so that's supposed to cool and/or heat, you know, that much space. What we wanna do is, is try to duct it, so we blow it across the room at its full length instead, to try to distribute the air better. Unfortunately, we have this much room above the ceiling, and there's just not enough room to run duct work. Like in here, you see supply and return diffusers in the ceiling, because all the duct work, there's plenty of room above here. Those buildings weren't designed that way, so we're just trying to improve everything best we can with the money that's potentially there, and do what you can to make the environment better, and try to get it to the point where Jim can manage it better and deal with it.
So then, our goal in that, that this would have temperature across the building be more even? For instance, in the elementaries, and well, Brad alluded to it with the high school, and I would have said that for the high school too, you could have a room that's really cold, and you could have a room that, you know, is really warm and not that far from each other really.
Correct, and I think, Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a lot of what you see is, the computer might tell you one thing, but it's not accurate to what's in the classroom, because your control system's just animated, and it's not accurate anymore. So.
So the controls would be?
All probably the same thing. We would, we'd replace everything so that he can then see it and make sure it's and make sure it's accurate. So if he gets a call that a classroom's hot or cold, then maybe he can tweak the temperature a little bit or go investigate and make sure the units work properly. Also, the new units would be something that he can maintain, where he can clean it, keep it operating the way it should, and hopefully in the long run, have a better environment than we do right now. Right now, there's not much you can do, so.
May I also ask, I know Adam Strosser's here and Brian is here. If you two could report on how that affects learning, teacher, culture, climate in your buildings, what you're seeing. It's great to hear it from the mechanical part of it, but what are you guys really living in your buildings on a day-to-day basis?
Well, with elementary kids, they build the classroom, the classroom for specials, art, music, P.E., different environments, different temperatures. We talked about the noise in the classroom. Those air units are very loud. All of our teachers do have the speaker system within their rooms, which helps out. But there's just a lot of noise. One classroom, a student may need a sweatshirt or a sweater. Next one, they're in their shirt sleeves. So it just affects the day-to-day operation for students going from classroom to classroom.
Thank you. Adam, do you have anything?
I would echo what Brian's saying. It's kind of like a guess, how wet to wear to school each day because you don't know if you're going to need to be wearing a sweater, if you want a polo shirt. So it's hard for kids when they had a week when it's very warm, and they're wearing short sleeves and shorts, and they come to school the next day and it's cold and all their classroom. It just makes it hard to concentrate on what they're trying to do for seven hours in a row when they're uncomfortable.
And Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but since you've been here, which has been the last academic year now this year, did some of your classrooms reach 80, high 80s, low 80s?
Last year, for a couple of weeks, especially the second floor, there was a two or three period when it was very warm up or 80s, and it was very comfortable and hard to learn.
So Terry, the units in the elementary will still be individual room units?
It will be.
But probably a quieter fan system and...
It would be. We're installing the same type of units in a school system in Fort Wayne. And they also frees up a lot of wall space because we eliminate those old units. And that now, as you see from the picture, that's used as storage on the top of a lot of it. But that could be casework. It could be this open floor space. We can remove that, and basically the unit's about the size of probably your furnace at home. It's taller, but it's about the same size, that's what I was explaining to Jim. They're not very big because it's not serving that big space. The difference is, it might be the size of your furnace at home, but at home, you have, you know, three, five, six people in the house instead of 20-plus kids. So, and size-wise, you know, that room may be 1,000 square feet compared to your house, but that's about the size of them. They're not, much bigger than that easel. They square that easel up in the corner. That's about the size of it. They're not real large.
Do those teachers have individual control or are you looking at those units?
Jim would actually have it set up so they have a band.
Okay.
They don't want to get them out of control because somebody, kid starts, you wouldn't want... They'd have some control, but Jim's really going to control it from his side, so. Thank you, Terry.
More questions?
Kurt? Good evening. Pleasure to be here. For people who do not know me, I'm Kurt Fletcher. I'm with Umba and Associates. We're serving as financial advisor to the school corporation for the proposed project. What I'd like to present this evening is taking the project forward and showing the board and the public how the bonds, how the financing will be structured and the estimated tax impact from the project. What I'd like to start with, the first couple of slides is giving everyone a kind of a snapshot of the school corporation's current outstanding debt obligations and how that enters in. This will show how the proposed bonds will be structured. You can see that the school corporation has about seven obligations outstanding, including the common school loans, and each of the individual payments for each of those obligations. But look to the far right-hand column, that's the total annual payments for the school corporation. And in budget year 15, the payments were just a little over 2.7 million. Then for three years, with the retirement and structure of some of the existing debt, those payments decreased to about 2,660,000. And then in budget year, got to look, 2019, with further retirements of the debt obligations, the payments for the corporation stepped down to about 1.8 million. And this is the same information, just looking at a graph. And you can see, beginning in budget year 15, the payments are about the same through 2018, and then you have a step down in the payments, and then a further step down in budget year 2023. What this displays, the school corporation has looked at several options for the project, but this illustrates a combined payments for the school corporation, basically with the proposed bonds. You can see in the brown is the existing payments that are paid off in budget year 2028. In the blue is the proposed bonds. And the proposed bonds are going to be paid back over a 20-year period. Basically, we're wrapping or tailoring the payments around the school corporation's existing. You can see for three years, payments are about 500,000. That will increase the proposed debt service fund tax rate. And that is the fund we're talking about. The debt service fund for the school corporation is levied and serves all the debt obligations for capital improvements. That estimated increase is just shy of eight cents for three years for this proposed current financing. And then the payments are about a maximum of about 850,000 for the remaining term of the repayment. And that estimated, I'll call it, project tax increase or tax impact is just a little over 13 cents. But the incremental tax impact from the project is about eight cents for three years.
As a point of reference, Kurt, eight cents per what? $100 in evaluation?
Per $100 of assessed value. And I'll put my eyes on so I can see this a little better. But basically, you're looking at, up in the text box, you can see those payments, the estimated maximum annual payment, and then the incremental payment of the 500,000. We're looking at an estimated interest cost for the financing at about 5.3 million over the 20 years. And I'll only, I'll preface that, at the bottom of the schedule, you can see we've got an estimated interest rate for the proposed financing at 4.35%. We're using a conservative interest rate. That is currently probably about 1% higher than the current bond market. And the reason we're doing that is, basically, these bonds, timing-wise, we're looking if the project would move forward. Is pricing these in December? There's a lot of speculation on where interest rates are going. So we're basically using a conservative number to set the maximum parameters for the project. And that would impact, when you're looking at that interest cost, you're looking at tax impact, and then total estimated interest expense for the financing.
For the public, that means most likely that'll be lower.
If we would sell them today, it would be less than what we're presenting this evening. And this is the same information on the graph. This is the proposed combined payments for the school corporation. You can see that in budget year 16, the total annual payments would increase to about 3.1 million, 60,000 for three years. And then you'd have a decrease in the total annual payments, down to about 2.6 million with this current financing. And that's the current level that the corporation is approximately at. So what does this mean to various taxpayers? We've listed a range of homesteads, values, market value or gross assessed value for homesteads. Homesteads are, that's where an individual lives, and they receive the homestead credit, supplemental homestead credit, and then a mortgage exemption if you have a mortgage outstanding. So you can see, if you look at a $100,000 home, that individual with those deductions are paying on about $32,750. And you're basically looking at the incremental impact or that additional increase in your taxes for three years over what that individual paid in 2015 would be about $26 per year. And if you look at $200,000 home, basically, that assessed value that that individual was paying on is about 98,000. So you're looking at about $78 per year. That's on an annual basis. Then if we look at farm ground, and we're using the current base value, which is established by the state of Indiana at $2,050 per acre, that incremental increase would be about $163. And then if we look at other type of property, rental property, commercial property, it is about $79 per $100,000 of gross assessed value. And those two last property classes, no deductions. They're paying on the gross. And then the far right-hand column, that is the project maximum annual impact at that 13.3 cents. But if you go back to the graph, a substantial amount of the obligation to the corporation, when that 13 cents hits the rolls, basically, you're maintaining the school corporation's debt service fund rate for four years, and then it steps down further. Interest rates, anybody's guess, they're still low. But I think that from, they're not historically low, but from the bond market perspective, interest rates are lower than what they have been in previous years. And I'll answer any questions.
That million and a half that starts in the first three years, is that a requirement that you have to pay so much on this project? Or is there any reason to maybe extend it out since rates are lower so the tax rate doesn't change?
Well, beginning in 2008 with the property tax reform, the state legislature really set a maximum of 20 years that any future projects moving forward. Prior to that, a lot of bond issues were financed for 25, probably 27 years. You get beyond that, before the change, there was a premium you had to pay to lengthen the financing. But that's the reason, really, we're looking at the 20-year maximum. And what the school corporation will do, they'll pay an interim lease rental beginning in 2016, which will really offset some of the capitalized interest costs during the construction period.
So you couldn't make more principal due in '23, '24, '25, and '26? You'd have been here 20 years?
Well, the other thing that the state did for us is, basically, you have to, beginning after June 30th, 2008, all new debt obligations had to be repaid on a level basis or the aggregate payments for a school corporation, city, or town must be level. And we did look at an option of pulling this forward and maintaining it. What this does for the corporation, not knowing what the future holds, this allows them some opportunities with the decrease in their annual payments to really, from a tax rate management standpoint, moving forward.
We didn't want to hurt the taxpayers, and we want to try not to hurt the taxpayers. We want to try to keep it healthy.
This assumes no growth, right?
Yeah, there's no, we're assuming, if we're looking at it, we're not assuming any growth in the net assessed value for the school corporation. And like I mentioned, we're using a conservative interest rate moving forward. So hopefully, if everything falls into place, and I don't really see a dramatic increase in the interest rates, basically, it should be, it should be less than what we're presenting.
Do you know what AV this is based on?
2015.
Put it on the map, I can.
Yeah. Brian's probably got it in resolution. 599, 599, 599 million, 359? Or did I just get with the one? Budget order. What is it?
That's it.
That's it? It's based on 2015.
This, actually, is kind of a question for you both, Terry and Kurt. If we were not able to do anything, and water started to damage buildings, and they became structurally unsound, because right now, they're not structurally unsound as long as we take care of roofing and water in the masonry and that kind of thing, what would it cost to build a new elementary school, about?
Probably $300, $350 a square foot, so we'll do some quick math for it. I think $20 million.
$20 million. So if we, that's one building, and that's one of our smaller buildings. So if we continue to maintain and invest in our properties, we can keep these buildings longer.
Can. They already got quite a bit of life on them, and we're doing our best to maintain the systems within them and the building envelope as best we can. And improve the design, like we did with the security entries, secure entries, things like that. Overall, buildings have age, and do the best we can to maintain them as long as we can, until it becomes impractical or impossible to continue to put money into. It's like an old car. That's my analogy. And at some point, it might get to the point where you can't save it anymore. But right now, we can and continue to improve them. But we'll make it perfect. If we consider this building perfect, it's not 100% perfect, but this building's very nice. It won't be to this level, but it'll be a lot better than it is.
Scott, can you bring that graph back up there?
This is basically interest here.
No, we do, we do have some principal.
Do have some principal there.
Yeah. Basically, that first payment is, in '16 is interest only. We do have about 50,000 or 60,000 each year in principal built in.
So, you know, the way we're structured here, for future boards to possibly do something out in this area, if we're in good shape getting out to here, you may be looking at a new building when we get out to here. We may have possibility to finance a new building in another, what, 20 years? Because what we're doing now, we're fixing a lot of things. I mean, we ought to have buildings in pretty good shape. But you never know what pops up. I mean, something may happen in here that, you know, so.
Terry, do you think that the remainder of the system that you talked about at the high school, you said that our current things that we're proposing... you said that our current things that we're proposing are going to make it better. It's not going to solve everything, but there's some system left. Do you think that the remainder could make it through eight more years until we lose some significant debt in 2023?
Which system in particular?
About the high school, cooling, heating and, you know, things like that?
Jim knows better than I do as far as how many Band-Aids he can keep putting on those two big areas in the basement. But, I mean, they are antique and very obsolete. I mean, they, they are, and just replacing those units is anywhere between five hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars to replace those two units with something that's going to be better. But we're still using the same ductwork as we call it. They're, they're masonry tunnels and pipes in the ground. And that's part of the inefficiency in the system is we wouldn't design that way these days. Can we get eight more years out of it? I really doubt it. It's a high-risk scenario. I don't know how many classrooms those two units serve total, Jim, but it's, it's a lot. So if you want?
They do upstairs and downstairs of the main building. These are the upstairs and downstairs of the main building of the classroom. Pretty much in the south hallway upstairs.
Okay. So before we reach twenty-three where we get rid of some debt, we're probably going to have to add some more debt, which makes a lot of sense to get rid of debt as fast as possible rather than level it out. In your opinion, is it, is the building, Jim and Terry, is the building, the high school building, good enough so that it would be worth replacing those high-dollar things?
I believe so. I think the building is well-built.
Walk through the building, the building, I think the building is nice. I really do. And that is a combination of part of my department, but also these guys has allowed us to improve things, update things. So no, I think the building is well worth the improvements.
If you look at how the building was built, the high school is one of the rarities. You have terrazzo flooring in it. So you look at the terrazzo floor in there and go to the courthouse and it has terrazzo flooring. I mean, it was built to last. And unfortunately, your other buildings don't have it, but that one does. And, and so it was, it was built fairly well. Has a good roof system on it now. The wall system's much better since we did that a few years ago. Now it's, it's the rest of what's inside. Let's, let's continue to update, fix and do the best we can with funds that are potentially there. But at some point, yes, you have to decide what building comes first. The bigger issue with Riddle and Columbia is space. You don't have any room now. From last I heard, one of the schools, you have four classrooms out in the hallway.
Sections of classrooms, I don't want to. We have remediation programs, we have enrichment programs, those types of things happening and literally closets that we have switched over, renovated or in groupings and hallway corners and cubicles. So it's, it's been difficult, it has.
It's usually those buildings that come first on which one gets a new building.
When she asked you the cost of a new building, I wanted to say add three more classrooms before you figure out the square footage because?
Yeah, and I just sort of remember sixty thousand square feet. I, I know what the high school is, is I've been in it more, but that was, that's a ballpark. And, you know, fifteen to twenty million dollars for a building like that. And, and it's not going to be bigger than it is. It's, you know, to, because you're going to be, in some cases, landlocked and have to deal with that issue.
But back to the high school age back then. So replacing the air handlers and looking into that, that is a relatively temporary fix that we're looking at?
No, it'll, that system, because what we're trying to do should give you twenty years as far as a mechanical system. And then you could potentially replace those units again or design it differently. But at that point, that building's nineteen seventy-three, so it'll be sixty-two years old. And that's, that's getting up there. So it's something to think about. So I think I did math right.
Sixty-five.
Sixty. Okay.
Nineteen sixty-five.
Oh, okay, sorry, middle school seventy-three, right. So, yeah, so you're pushing seventy plus years old and somebody remembered as far as when it was replaced last time.
Yeah, that was our discussion point, but the, the high school that stands right now has had more life use in it than the high school that it replaced. The old high school was served for fewer years.
Terry, you touched a little bit on efficiency. I think that's one thing we need to look at, that cost savings through this efficiency that we've been doing. You know, better lighting, better heating, cooling, high school window, the walls. We're saving money. So we're spending money, yes, but there is also some savings too. Can you, go say a little bit about that?
Correct, actually I can talk to Jim before I leave. There were, there were a couple cabinet heaters and a vestibule on today. And it's controls issue, I know what it is. And those kind of things you don't want to happen, but if Jim doesn't know what's happening, you're just going to waste energy. So everything we're doing with the buildings, where we can, we put LED lighting in. So in here you don't have LED lights. So if light, a bulb goes bad, Jim has to send somebody over to replace it. With LED, we hope to not have that issue for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years and no one ever touches it. So you reduce cost on maintenance and manpower. But overall, you're going to use a lot less energy as well. Now, mechanical systems, we hope to improve it with controls so that Jim has a control system that he can see or a control system that can send him a text on his phone to tell him, hey, this unit shut down and, and you need to go deal with it. And that tells him on Saturday, you know, evening, instead of he comes in Monday morning and finds three feet of water somewhere because something's not working the way it should. So there's a lot of things that come into that. Energy cost is the big one. If you can put controls on it, you can tell it to shut off, turn down, different things to help have better control overall. Hopefully help recruit money on a different end, which Cherry deals with and try to pay the bills and, you know, keep buildings operative. So, yeah, and hopefully we do the best we can with all those things. And again, it's within the limitations of, of money, that's what it comes down to.
Randy, if you would, you might mention the bonding process and what has to take place next. Now that we know what repairs are intended to be and we know how much it's going to cost, we've got at least one guy who's a former banker here, or he's a banker again. So he'll be interested in the bonding process.
So what is before you tonight, of course, the two public hearings. And there are resolutions that are related to the two public hearings. The first resolution is a ten-twenty-eight hearing, which essentially lays out in the resolution all of the projects that you find if you were to adopt the resolution that the projects are in fact necessary. And the approximate cost of completing the projects would be the nine point nine million dollars. There's really not much more. It does, it does have the not to exceed debt service on tax rate of, Kurt mentioned, thirteen cents, thirteen point, thirteen point, thirteen three five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. That resolution again relates to the ten-twenty-eight hearing. The second resolution relates to the determination to enter into a lease for the financing. As Ted mentioned earlier, we would anticipate leasing Columbia's school, elementary school, which will allow then for the school corporation to sell Columbia to the building corporation. A portion of the bond proceeds then would be used to pay for that sale to the building corporation. The school would receive those proceeds and that would then allow the school to proceed, to pay for the, the other project. So the building corporation itself would fund out of its bond proceeds, the improvements to Columbia. The school corporation then would get the sale proceeds from Columbia that the building corporation would pay and use those to fund the other improvements at the other schools. And so the lease that is before you for initial approval as part of this resolution sets that out in terms of the lease of Columbia's school to the building corporation. That resolution contains a lot of the financial information, the first paragraph that Kurt referenced. Maximum term of the lease would be twenty-one years. The lease does provide for an interim lease rentals Kurt mentioned in 2016. That allows you to save, I think Kurt mentioned also that it allows you to save capitalized interest. So you would pay interest or pay a lease rental during construction on the existing, on the existing school. And that money would be used to pay debt service on the bonds and that would avoid capitalized interest. If you didn't have an existing building, if you were building a new school, you would have to pay, you would have to fund the capitalized interest out of the bond proceeds, which then you're paying interest on interest over the life of the bond. And we can avoid that here because of the interim lease rental. In the resolution, the bond interest rate is set at not to exceed five percent. You know, Kurt mentioned slightly less than that. This is a high number, a higher number if you will, because we only want to go through this approval one time. If, if for some reason rates were to spike, we wouldn't want to have to start at the beginning. And certainly decisions can be made at that point in terms of what the financed amount would be, but we wouldn't want to have to start the approval process again. And we'll also say that the lease does have a provision in it that once the bonds are in fact sold and the interest rates are known, the lease rental will be reduced to match the debt service. So as Kurt indicated, we're hopeful that rates remain low and much lower than the five percent, lower than the four, I think you said Kurt, four point three.
Average of four point three five. So my, my max is, is around the five percent.
Right. So we would hope that once bonds are sold, that we would be below that conservative interest rate estimate so that we would reduce the lease rental to match the debt service. And so once we get to the end of the financing, we'll, we'll be able to predict with absolute certainty what the lease rentals would be and what that impact would be then on the, on the tax rate going forward. This resolution, the preliminary determination resolution then would authorize the notice of determination to be published and allow that to happen. And it does approve the form of the lease and it also sets a lease hearing. And if you had a chance to look at the resolution, we have a blank on, in section five for that lease hearing to occur. The earliest it could occur under the statute would be Monday, October twenty-sixth. And so if your desire is to hold a special meeting, that would be the first time it could happen, would be Monday, October twenty-sixth. If we're able to do it soon thereafter, that night or soon thereafter, it would allow us to stay on schedule with the financing so that we can look going forward to be able to sell and close the bonds before the Christmas holiday. So I would sort of ask your consideration of, you know, filling in the blank, if you will, by identifying the meeting date so we can publish that notice. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. But the process from here on out would be if you, if you adopt the resolutions this evening, we would publish the appropriate notices over the coming days. The notice of determination issue bonds, there's a notice of decision issue bond, which is an antiquated requirement under the statute, but the general assembly hasn't seen fit to get rid of it. So we would publish that. And then the other important notice would be the notice of lease hearing for that October meeting date, if you will, that, that meeting to hold the lease hearing. Once that lease hearing is held, we would then sign, have you sign the lease? The building corporation would meet around that time of that meeting. They would sign the lease, we'd publish notice of the execution of the lease. And during that time, Kurt would be working on the offering document for the bonds, working with the rating agencies. And all of that would lead then to a bond sale, hopefully in early December and a closing before, before the Christmas holiday. If we were to, in terms of the bond sale, we would certainly want to be able to close yet this year. We couldn't sell much later than the first week or two in December. The bond market unfortunately begins to shut down as, as the holiday approaches. And so it can be difficult to price bonds and get a reasonable interest rate. So we really would hope to be able to sell bonds in early December. And the schedule we've mapped out would allow us to do that. Happy to answer any questions.
You want to speak about the timing for the petition remonstrance process? Because that kicks off starting with the publication that's currently scheduled for.
Right, right. So we would do that notice of, the preliminary determination notice I spoke about earlier, that's the notice that would trigger that thirty-day process. So that notice would be published on Wednesday, assuming you would take action this evening on that, on this resolution. And then in that thirty-day period, folks would have the opportunity, if they so desire, to file the petitions, to request the petition remonstrance process.
And so if, if we schedule our, a special meeting for the twenty-sixth of October, we'll have an idea whether there's going to be?
Right, we'll be past that point.
A petition remonstrance process to engage and grant you a board opportunity to review your situation.
Right, we will have been through that process. The lease hearing can't occur, the lease hearing itself is a thirty-day process. Oddly enough, again, under the statute, if you're building a new school, it's a ten-day notice requirement. But if you're renovating a school, it's a thirty-day requirement. So given that you're renovating schools, it's a thirty-day requirement. But it does line up nicely with the determination notice so that by the time you have that special meeting to hold the lease hearing, you have been, will have been passed through that thirty-day petition remonstrance period. So you would know whether in fact there's going to be an issue or not. And you can choose whether to go forward at that point or not.
Forgive my ignorance on the lease. Could you explain the why we need to have a lease?
Sure. There is, no.
Somebody asked me, I know what to say.
No, it's a, it's a very good question because I, we glossed over that or I didn't even mention it tonight. But there are essentially two ways for a school corporation to enter into debt. One is just to issue general obligation bonds. But there is a limit, a constitutional debt limit of two percent of net assessed valuation. And so for almost every school across the state, I would say across the country, across the state, if you're doing significant work, you bump up against that two percent debt limit pretty quickly. And so it's not on a per-project basis, it's on all the debt you have outstanding. So and you do in fact have some general obligation debt outstanding. It's a little bit easier from a issuance process and less legal work to do a general obligation bond. You have a bond resolution, we go to bond, we go to the market, we sell bonds and we close. With this, we do have to structure the lease, we have to have the appraisers appointed by the court, sell a school to the building corporation. So there's a little bit more upfront work to do. And so a lot of smaller deals are done through a general obligation bond. But then when you issue enough general obligation debt, you bump up against the limit. And so larger issues then you have to go through the lease process. The Supreme Court said a long time ago that lease debt is not general obligation debt. And so that's why you'll see particular school corporations, almost all of the debt that's issued is, is done as lease debt. Because if you're looking at building a new school, you heard that twenty million dollars would exceed almost every school corporation's two percent debt limit. Because everybody will have some debt outstanding, so.
Thank you.
So the process will be, the school corporation currently owns the building. We will sell it to the building holding corporation. This holding corporation was created back in the nineties at a time like this. And then because they own the building, we have to lease it from them because we need to use it. And so we enter into the lease, they allow us to use the building, we pay them lease payments, they pay it back to the bondholders, which pays off the bonds, which makes everybody happy.
And the lease is set up so that, and the legalese, it's a triple net lease, meaning that the building corporation will have no responsibility with respect to the school. It'll as if, it'll be as if the school never sold it to the building corporation. The school will be responsible for maintaining insurance, maintaining the, the heating and cooling and paying all the bills and all of that. So from a practical standpoint, it'll have very little effect. We, we sometimes tell building corporation members as they meet to approve of a financing and approve of a lease, they don't get involved in designing, they don't get involved in renovating. We only need them to do what we need them to do legally. So we don't want, we want people that are interested, but we don't want them interested to want to pick out wall colorings or AC systems. That's your job as board member. But you'd be surprised, some people get excited, particularly in a new school, they want to see the designs and they want to have input. And we say, no, no, that's the school board's job, it's not the building corporation's job, but.
So Bill, Bob and Kerry can't pick a color in this classroom?
No.
And they already own Riddle, correct?
Yes, they do.
Any other?
They own the high school.
And the high school?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one more to solve.
No, middle, the middle school is owned by a separate building corporation, but, yeah. You own the administration building.
Is there a limit to how many times you can do this lease sign? I mean, if we're, if we're looking eight years down the road, we want to give more money, can we re-lease something again?
You can, and particularly for smaller school corporations and fewer buildings, as Ted was just starting to speak to, you'll have essentially all of your school facilities leased. And so what you can do is, and for example, if, if this building were leased and you needed to do a significant repair in the future and you wanted to go through another lease financing, you simply add the project to the existing lease and then add the incremental increase in lease rental to the existing lease. The, the base lease rental would go to the old financing and then the incremental increase lease rental would go to the new financing. So it is possible to do that, yes.
As long as the assessed value of the buildings falls within a parameter or is there a limit, Terry?
No, there's no two percent limit on the school building corporation. It is simply upon the governmental entity. So.
They're in the fair market on lease value that you can't exceed?
Well, and part of that is if you're adding, if you're adding a new project, it, it's not as clear-cut as it would be in sort of the corporate real estate world, no. I mean, if you're adding a new project, the lease rental that would be attributable to that project would essentially be the cost of the project. So if you look at the cost of the high school is, I can't remember off the top of my head, but the, well, it's in the. I can't remember off the top of my head, but the, well, it's in the, $6.5 million. If we were, say we were just going to do the Rochester High School and we were going to lease that to the existing building corp, or through the existing building corp, you would have a lease rental of, that would roughly equate to that $6.5 million project. So the cost of doing that would essentially be its fair market value at that point in time. So you would get, you would get your value from the lease rental structure, if that makes sense.
Yeah. There's one other restriction on that, and I believe that's in new construction. The board can propose what has to happen, but it still goes down with Department of Local Government finance.
No, no, that's kind of way out.
That's gone away in construction?
Yes.
Okay, on new construction, okay. Gunnar Daniels created something, but they realized it wasn't working, so. So they had to repeal that.
I was there about, yeah, for a short time and then it went away.
Good, okay. So it's all up to you.
Thank you. You have any questions?
At the end of this lease rental period, then, let's say 20 years from now, there's no additional debt added on to that in any way, then the school corporation gets ownership back?
Right.
Dollars.
A dollar, right. That's the way the lease is set out. Once the, once the lease is complete, once all of the lease rentals have been paid, the debt service and the bonds of the building corporation have been paid, the school comes back to the school corporation at that point in time.
You won't be surprised. Company has been transferred back and forth a couple of times already, but it's currently in the corporation.
And building corporation has no liabilities whatsoever?
No, that's part of the triple-net feature of the lease, so that they have no responsibility. There is actually a bond trustee that, once the bonds are issued, the, I think Kurt, somebody mentioned that the lease rental payments are made to the bond trustee. So there's nothing that comes back to the building corporation. And it's actually that bond trustee, then. What will happen is, in the lease, the school corporation makes representations to the building corporation about insurance and all of those rights and responsibilities. Then, the building corporation makes those same responsibilities to the trustee and assigns the lease essentially, or gives an interest to the trustee, a security interest in the lease. So then, it's the bond trustee that will ask the school corporation to provide a certificate every year saying that, yes, you've maintained the insurance and you've maintained all of the other requirements under the lease. So the building corporation, once the financing is done, really should never have to meet again with respect to the project. Even during the construction of the project, the bond proceeds will be deposited with the trustee, but we'll have an agency agreement in place that will allow the school board, whomever you designate, to make draws in that construction fund. So the building corporation never really even has to be involved with that draw process either. So it's really a couple of meetings upfront for the building corporation, and a bunch of documents they sign at closing relating to the bonds. But once the bonds are issued, the building corporation never really meets with respect to the project again.
Another question, I'm sorry. But it used to be those building corporations had to at least organize once a year. Does that not have to happen anymore?
No, they still have to maintain their existence, right. Yeah, I was glossing over that point. But yeah, they still maintain their existence on an ongoing basis, but, and if they, in a lot of places, they formally don't meet every year. They'll just file the annual report or have, you know, Ted, as the attorney, would file the annual report. But when they do meet, they would just elect officers. The way the bylaws for the building corporations are written, that the current members remain in place until the next annual meeting, whenever that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two of us both public hearings on the 10th of January on the lease. We've covered that.
I think we've covered enough on the lease.
Unless anyone has any other questions?
Okay, they may have any more questions on the lease. Not, we'll close the public hearings. And at this time, we'll open our regular meeting. And I'll call it to order, and we'll start with the pledge. And then, I'll have them all sign. Thank you. We'll start out, we have a recognition, Adam.
We had a student today, we received confirmation that Eli Q., senior in the high school, was named a commended student for the 2016 National American Scholarship Program. What that means is that Eli placed in the top 5% of the more than 1.5 million students who took the 2014 PSAT, which is a qualifying test for National American Scholarship.
And Adam actually invited the family to be here this evening, but they had other obligations. So we're going to try to have them here at the next meeting and formally make that announcement for everybody.
That's good. Thank you, Adam. Okay, moving right along. Have our consent items. Minutes of August 24th regular meeting. Minutes of September 8th study session. Minutes of the September 8th special session. Any addition or correction, three minutes? Then, who on the financials, Sherri?
Okay, our fund balances from last year to our current year for August. General fund in 2014 was $974,278, and currently is $1,016,484. Our debt service in 2014 was $1,547,793, and currently is $1,511,566. Capital projects in 2014 was $439,851, and currently is $443,237. Transportation fund in 2014 was $764,420, and currently is $898,758. Our bus replacement in 2014 was $84,755, and currently is $294,771. And that's still waiting for our buses to come in. Our self-insurance fund in 2014 was $127,601, and currently is $330,053. Claims to be approved, vendor claims, are numbers 7,405 to 8,222, Our payroll claims for approval are from the pay of $821.94, pays totaling $804,984.96.
Okay. Any questions?
Sherri, does that second payroll, is it higher because there was-
We had some extra credit. That's an extra sub.
Okay, any other questions? The motion to approve the consent items?
Sub moved.
Motion by Jenny?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Any discussion? Home favor, right hand, please. Okay, motion carries 6-0. Finan-, okay, adoption of the capital projects plan?
Asking for adoption of our 2016, 2017, 2018 capital projects, which estimated budgets was $1,725,000.
Any questions?
Is that comparable to previous years?
Yes.
No major changes?
I think it'll come in high, if the deal keeps going. So it's a little more like the last year.
Any other questions? Motion to adopt?
Sub moved.
Motion by Jenny, second by Lisa. Any discussion? Home favor, right hand. Okay, motion carries 6-0. Adoption of bus replacement plan?
Asking for adoption of our 2016 bus replacement. As made a budget is $345,000, and there's really no difference between that and the previous year.
For where we should be in the rotation of buses, we picked up a couple of small buses. So everything looks good there. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Steve?
So how many buses will that be for $340,000?
Three.
Three full-sized?
Yes.
Is propane bus cheaper than a fuel bus?
It'd be cheap to fuel it right now, but I don't know. We haven't, I don't think we've ever looked into-
They would go out to bid and stuff the state doesn't. Bus companies aren't making those, that's not an option.
Yeah, not an option available? Okay.
Really?
Right now, propane fuel is pretty cheap.
So a city can have a propane bus, or a school system can?
Pardon?
A city can have a propane bus, or a school system can?
I don't know.
When the state puts out to bid, and the dealer's going, and that, that's not an option.
I wonder if maybe safety issue, using compressed gas, possibly? I don't know.
Can we ask a question? Can we look at that later on?
Yeah, that'd be good to check into.
Or any other alternative fuel vehicles, depending on how much fuel is at the time.
Yeah. There's some trucking industry that uses compressed natural gas. And there are putting in compressed natural gas filling stations and truck stops. There's not enough of them to make it feasible. But yeah, it'd require, for propane, you know, having our own tank and probably pumping it in.
Ted had an interesting point. As we're looking to purchase that vehicle, that would be an option we could look into at that time. Give Ted the credit there.
That's a good point.
Just thought.
Yeah, something we'll look into. Any other questions? Okay, the motion adopt the bus replacement plan.
Sub moved.
A second.
Okay, motion by Lisa.
Second by Brad.
Any other questions? Home favor, right hand. Okay, motion carries 6-0. Student stakeholder focus. Have a list of donations. We have band donation. Rochester Kiwanis Club, $1,050 for when the band puts out flags on the six holidays. That's an additional one to our agenda. And we have First Federal Savings Bank, $250 for RMS football. RTC Communications, $250 RMS football. Beacon Credit Union, $250 for RMS football. Shepherd Chevrolet Buick, $250 for RMS football. Joe McCarter, $100 for RMS football. Tracy Thayer, Thayer Construction, $150 for Columbia's Zebra Zone. Teachers Credit Union, $125 for Columbia's Zebra Zone Character Education Program. Justin Brady, Brady, excuse me. Brady Insurance, $200 for Columbia's Zebra Zone Character Education Program. New Holland, $50 for Columbia's Zebra Zone Character Education Program. Non-Hem donor, $7.2, no restriction on use. Mike Zainer, the Football Club, $2,736 for varsity football helmets. Any questions on those? If not, take a motion to approve the donations.
Sub moved.
Okay, motion by Brad.
I'll second.
And second by Lisa. Any other discussion, questions? Home favor, right hand. Okay, motion carries 6-0. National Arms Society, DC field trip with this.
Thank you, Adam.
Okay, well, hi, Nora. Nora, so I'm the advisor of the National Arms Society at the high school. And this year, we would like to take a trip to Washington, DC. The company that we would be booking this trip through is called Explorica. And I'll do a little bit more on that in a little bit. It'll be a four-day trip to Washington, DC, and it's an all-inclusive package. So Explorica was founded in 2000, and they create educational tours to connect teachers and students to new cultures and even people around the globe. They get personalized assistance throughout. I've already worked with my, I don't even know what they call him, but he's kind of like my travel planner. That's what I think of him as. I already have been on the phone with him for at least an hour, just discussing the different options that we have and what all they provide. And you can see his name right there. Our itinerary, on day one, we would get there in the afternoon. We'd go on a sightseeing tour in the evening. The next day, we'd get to go to Mount Vernon and have a guided tour of the Capitol, the Supreme Court, and the Holocaust Museum. On day three, we would get to go to the cemetery and Marine Corps Memorial, the Smithsonian, National Archives, Forge Theater. And then, there's also this evening ghost tour where they take you and tell you about the different things that have happened in the history of the city. The kids are really excited to hear about that one. And on day four, before we come home, we'd get to go to the International Spy Museum. So like I said, it was all-inclusive. And you can see here all the things that are included. So, the price that I'll be giving in Slide 2 will include all of this. And so, the only thing out of pocket for travelers would be lunch. And any other incidentals they might want, like gift shops and such. So safety provided by Explorica. The tour directors themselves, they're highly recommended. They have at least five years' experience. We will have an overnight security guard at the hotel, and they've done background checks on them. They have $5 million liability insurance. And the bus that they use for us will be found through the American Bus Association. And then, travelers also have the option to purchase travelers' insurance. The cost is an estimate at this point. It's based on the number of travelers. And we estimated our group size to be about 35. There will be total of, let's see, we have 43 members right now. I'm going to be inducting about another 40. So we're going to have about a group of 80 students or so. And we're just assuming 35 of them will go. If more go, then the price will go down. If less go, the price could go up. And right now, it's based, the price is based on a student-shiproom ratio of 10 to 1. And right now, it would cost $713 per student. Now, that is, down here at the bottom, it says price will increase after October 1st because there's a back-to-school deal they have going right now to kind of encourage you to get signed up sooner rather than later. All those students can sign up up to 60 days before our travel date, if they still want to go. And for any parents or any other older adult that wants to go, if they're 23 or older, they would pay that $713 plus an additional $150. The date that we have planned is April 7th, which is a Thursday. The date that we have planned is April 7th, which is a Thursday, and we'd come back on April 10th. So, we would be back to school that Monday, and we'd only miss due date of school. Any questions? Mrs. Norris, is this the same company that the middle school used? I don't remember. It's a different company?
Okay. I just knew we had had good luck with them.
And my next question was October 1st. Would the students be obligated to pay for their trip by October 1st? I know we're really pushing there.
No, they offer payment plans, and there's no interest involved in the payment plans because I checked on that. They just have to pay a $50, like, booking.
Like deposit, $50 deposit by October 1st. They would have to do that.
I know. Oscar, at one point when we were emailing back and forth between yourself and Adam, would there have been a deal if we went with the same company for both trips?
Since it'd be two different trips, I do not believe there would have been a deal. I think it only comes with the bigger your individual group is, it goes with a particular time.
And then I will share, I have shared with the administrators and Mrs. Norris, my concern about taking two groups, National Junior Honor Society to Washington, D.C., and then as well as the National Honor Society. So, taking a middle school group and a high school group. And we spoke just very vaguely. We haven't had time to really sit down and go deeper into this process. But there are a group of kids that we have missed in the transition. As soon as we announced that the middle school was going to go, many of the students who had just moved over to the high school were wanting to join that trip. And if they were National Junior Honor Society of the Year before, could they go? So, I know that there are at least two years of students that are really wanting to do a Washington, D.C. trip. And then I challenged both building leaders to come up with two different trips that those students could take based on a junior high approach and then a high school approach. So, I would share with the board that I think this is a great opportunity for those high school students who have missed that opportunity in the past, but moving forward, would really like to see that to evolve into two separate trips for those students to engage in.
Mrs. Norris, why did you choose Explorica?
Honestly, we had just had a National Honor Society meeting with all the students, and they mentioned that they wanted to go on this trip. And the very next day, I had this brochure in my mailbox, so it was kind of kismet, I thought. So, I researched them, and I got in contact with them.
Do you know any schools or any people personally who had used?
Personally, no, I do not.
I will share that my son was one that went last year, so I can speak to the experience that they had at the middle school. And this is about the same price that they paid, but their lunch was included, and it was four full days. It looked like from your presentation, it was really two and a half to maybe three days of touring because you traveled during the day, it looks like, where they traveled overnight. So, it was the same days gone, but they traveled overnight, so it was more touring. So, I look at that and think that's pretty steep, quite frankly, of a cost. Have you had a chance to talk with anyone who helped organize the World Strides trip last year?
I had emailed with the advisor for National Junior Honor Society, but she did not provide any contact information for me to get in touch with their organization, with the one that did their trip.
Will funding come directly out of pocket, whether there'd be opportunity for fundraising or?
We have several fundraisers planned to help offset that cost.
Questions?
Adam, I assume you're in favor of it?
Yeah.
Do you have any problems or critiques or anything?
No, I went to the jeff from my daughter's trip to Washington, D.C. last summer, and their agenda and the cost is very similar to what I experienced there.
So, what age groups would go, what grades?
Juniors and seniors.
In the future, there may be different places for different groups, so that way they're not going to the same place twice within five or six seasons.
And Mrs. Norris, actually, you have two options for the students this year. She had Philadelphia, a Philadelphia trip and a Washington trip, and left them choose. So, if we get to where kids have already gone to Washington Junior High, I would think that they might take one of those other options.
Have we looked at the option of the middle school and high school going at the same time, thus raising or the possibility of more people, so less cost? They could be touring within their own separate group, so it's not like you'd have a senior hanging out with an eighth grader, but is that something that's going to explore?
I have not explored it, although to the issue of more students and less cost, that does work to an extent. But at least with this company, I don't know about the company the middle school used, that once we hit 55 travelers, we go above that, we have, the price goes back up because then they have to fund another bus. So, it would be playing around with numbers at that point.
You have a question?
Jenny, you said with the other company that the cost was about the same, but you just felt like that they had more time in the city.
They had four full days. They left on a Wednesday evening and traveled overnight. So, they arrived in the D.C. area at breakfast time and toured all day and slept at night, which I think they actually slept because they were pretty tired at that point. Toured all the next day, toured the next day, and then toured that Sunday and drove home overnight and arrived back home Monday morning. And it was Memorial Day weekend, so they didn't miss school on Monday. So, they only missed two days of school as well. But they had four full days of touring, and their lunch was included, where this one lunch was not included. So, they would need, obviously, seniors and juniors handling their own money and paying for their own lunch is a little different, but still, that adds to the cost of them.
I couldn't remember what, right? Wasn't there some places they'd like to have stayed longer or kind of rushed?
Well, if that... Yeah, you cannot see all of D.C. in two days or four days or probably a week or two even. So, I think that they could help design their own itinerary though, to a certain extent, what was available to them and how much time that they spent. And so, if there was an exploration of both levels going at the same time, I don't know that might be worth looking into and having then the people, you know, okay, the high school is doing this tour or whatever, the middle school.
I noticed on the schedule, there was one day that was pretty full, but they've done it enough. They must know how long the time you're going to need at each place.
I would assume so. The, I was able to pick and choose what I wanted, and this was what Tommy suggested that we do, said this would work pretty well. And then the evening ghost tour was one that we added on to that.
Yeah, maybe.
I applaud that you're asking the students and working with them, wanting to provide an experience for them. I think that's wonderful, and I can understand for the older students feeling like, wait a minute, we just missed it. Of course, then what about the people that graduated last year? We didn't send them either, you know? I mean, where do we draw that line? I am concerned about using a company that we don't have any personal experience with because there are many, many touring companies. And if we don't know, that's concerning to me.
Adam, the company you were associated with last year, was it one of these two that we were talking about or?
I have no idea. Just got off the list.
Adam, you have.
Any other questions? Superintendent's recommendation is?
I would like to see them go on the trip. I would challenge, I would challenge you to look at the different companies. I don't know if the board can make approval based on that, and then we could continue to communicate with Adam and myself what that best choice would be for the students with the best package, best price, and just challenge you to dig a little bit deeper in regards to that. But I think it's been a wonderful opportunity for our students and a program that both building leaders have said that they would be willing to look at and explore and evolve those trips moving forward.
I would make a motion that we could approve the A trip with your approval then on the company potentially checking in. I'd like to see you check with the company that the middle school used because getting another, at least another day of touring would be ideal. I'm concerned, it was my concern with the middle school group as well. I'm concerned that that is very optimistic, that you're going to be able to do that and actually get, that the kids are going to be able to get much out of it. I personally feel like it would be a better move to strike some of those things, maybe let the kids decide or, you know, and really get a better feel for the places that you are instead of flying those kids through D.C. in two and a half days and not. You were just there too.
I was just there. That's a lot.
That's a ton. That is just a ton.
And if that's what the tour guide suggested, that kind of makes me concerned also.
But I like your idea, at least we can approve a trip with Jen's approval, and they can look in those things too. That way, they're not waiting on us to make a recommendation, can make appropriate financial consideration.
And I understand needing to, or wanting to get this done so to get the best price, and I appreciate that. I don't like to make rushed decisions though, especially when the safety and well-being of all these students is at stake. And there are a lot of touring companies out there, and they, we happened to be in D.C. the first weekend of June, and I happened to walk around and saw many different ones. And there were some that were better behaved and some that were better organized and some that weren't.
I'm sure she gave that with Mrs. Murphy and all the school.
Well, and I would hope so because it doesn't look like that's been done.
At least we could give her an answer that way tonight since she's not touring.
I have one more question. Do you think that this delay of investigating another company is going to cripple the effort entirely?
It might with this particular company. I don't know if another company would be, I don't know if...
If they have the dates available or something?
Right. Well, it's not so much that the dates are available because this price will go up at the end of next week. And, but I mean, I want...
It's already more than, yeah.
But what I'm trying to say is, if I look at these other companies, maybe it is still the same comparable price after October. I don't know that at this point.
Maybe something along the lines of Lisa's recommendation with a cap of this number, hopefully lower. Would that work or?
Or the amount of days.
Yeah. Even if it was $50 more if they got four days.
We have to give her some flexibility to be able to do this too, I think.
Probably what, is it tickets for each thing you go to? So, you could have some savings if you cut out a couple things or? I'm not sure how that works.
There would be some savings with cutting out the ghost tour because that was added on. All the others were included. I could ask, I don't know.
Well, Lisa's motion, has there been a second yet? My second.
It wasn't real formal, but I was motioning that we approve the A trip, not necessarily the this trip with some further investigation and Jana's approval. And Adam, Adam and Jana, you know, if it goes through everybody. And I guess our request would be to try to get more out of that money than just the date, two days, really.
Yeah, the flexibility is built in because Jana and Adam can approve or disapprove.
I just don't want her thinking she's hamstrung.
That's right. That's right. We certainly know it should be discouraged at all.
No, I think it's a great thing.
Had we not had that great experience at the middle school, this would already be approved. But they had such a good experience for a longer time, that's the reason for the suggestions.
And I also recall that they really, that their tour guide was fantastic, and they said then that they would request, I believe it was a male, that they would request that same tour guide again. So, you know, that might be something you want to look into. So, I did make a formal motion.
That was second by Don. Any other discussion? All in favor? Right. Motion carries six zero.
I'd like to add a comment to that. Mrs. Norris has, I used to be the National Honor Society sponsor, and back then, that club was a recognition club instead of an action club. And so, she's made some changes, like she's started the induction ceremony a whole year earlier. And so, it's a student-run organization now, and her club is very active. And thank you for helping pick pumpkins and your group picking pumpkins for the Optimist Club. And she's got a really good student-run organization now, and I think it's really come a long ways.
Wonderful. Okay, information analysis, policies and procedures.
With policies and procedures, would this be the second reading? No, this is a resolution, so. So, if I have a concern on the policies, with some wording or something like that, depends on which policy you're talking about. But I think we're starting information.
Okay, I'm going off the...
Yeah, I'm concerned about G, correct? Yes.
The first agenda, we had an updated agenda. So, we're going to move to the adoption of the 1028 resolution. Make a motion to adopt.
So moved.
I make a motion that we approve the preliminary determination in a leased public school on, and have that meeting November 2nd at 6:00 p.m. here.
Second that. Motion by Don, second by Steve. Any other discussion? Lisa?
And that includes the preliminary plan specification, formal lease, the authorization publication, and the authorization and posting of the notice of decision entered into a lease of more than $5,000.
So, subsections B through F.
I include that.
And the preliminary fundraisers.
Got all that? All in favor? Motion carries six zero. So, now we're ready.
Chris, Angie, a question? Were you voting?
I was thinking about something else. I was lining the vote, I was...
Everybody knows the Colts are on an eighth third.
Deadline, deadline.
So, now I'm going to make all of you fall asleep with the policies and procedures. We had our first reading last month of many policies and procedures. Do you want me to highlight them again, Ted?
No.
Good. But the two main ones that were a point of discussion, school facilities, is that one you wanted to talk about?
No.
That broke down into three different categories. We want the public to use our school facilities. There is a process and a procedure to come and do that, and a cost associated with that depending upon what the organization is. If it's a school-based affiliated organization, there is no cost. If it is nonprofit organization, which would be the one that would probably most be involved in here, there is an act cost, and those costs have been determined by evaluating the different areas of the building, plus also using labor cost. And there's a spreadsheet of that for anyone who is interested in using the facilities that may look at that. Then the third, which is one that we don't have very often, but in the event that someone who has a for-profit company that would like to rent the space or use the space, they would have the cost plus a multiplier to be determined by the superintendent. This does not mean we do not want the public to use it, quite the opposite. We do want the public to use it. We want to make it very clear, the process and the amount that that would entail. Another one that has been a very discussion is actually several that involve coach training. Some of this is mandated by state law in what we must do, especially for the football program. And then we, as a board, have the opportunity to add on the responsibilities to other coaches. And our first reading, we read that we were saying, yes, all coaches need to do what we've asked our football coaches to do. But further discussion was saying that really isn't necessarily appropriate. The swim coach doesn't necessarily need the exact same training that the football coaches do. And so, it's more nuanced and more that we expect all of our coaches to have training, but those are set out in the administrative guidelines then that Mrs. Vance and the athletic director would work together, the superintendent and athletic director would work together in what is appropriate for each specific sport. We also have the opportunity whether or not to include volunteers in that. And again, left discretion. We, it is our intent that volunteers who are primarily responsible for their students would have the same level of training. We have an instance right now at the middle school where the tennis coach is completely volunteer, but yet he completely runs that program, so he should. Whereas, we may have a wrestling volunteer who comes in only when there's other coaches there and is only there two or three times during the year, but is on our volunteer. And that coach may not need the same level of training. We have left it so that there is discretion from the superintendent and the athletic director, but with the intent to provide the appropriate training. That was the question. Or another?
No, in the essence of time and some we can bring up in the study session, I don't know if we've adopted or if it's part of these policies and procedures as far as comp time for our classified employees. Has that already been adopted in this policy now, or is that still in these?
That was part of the handbook that was adopted at the last.
If that's something I'll bring in the study session, in essence of time then.
So, these are the policies that we set forth at our previous meeting. We have those available and can make those available at the administration office. Hard copies if people would like clean hard copies to look at those. This is our second reading. This is our second reading. Do we want to do our third as well?
Board, two.
Do we want to do our third reading, Ted?
We'll tie in the third reading.
Because I wanted to see a hard copy before we get to the third.
Okay, we can wait until next week.
There has been changes, so.
Exactly.
Square.
So there's our second reading and our policies and procedures.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. That takes some time. Okay, new soccer contract.
Mr. Howell, would you like to share, we had the opportunity to sit down with two representatives from the Fulton County Soccer Association and if you want to go through those few changes that we had left to make to that soccer contract and adopt the new contract?
Sure. When we first, we've together come up with a new agreement, pardon, for this year, we worked with Blacker, the property owner there, and adopted claims that they suggested and the board approved it. And right after its approval, they met with FCSA and FCSA had some things that they felt needed modified to the deal. So those modifications really centered around who's responsible for maintaining the field as far as mowing and mowing. And they felt with the small number of volunteers they have, it was a burden that they really felt they were having a hard time living up to. So the new contract calls for us to take over the mowing duties and the field mowing duties. It also specifies that we provide a porta pott. And it makes one modification to the payment. We had the payment originally go to FCSA, the $1,500 annual payment goes to Blacker, not to FCSA. So relatively minor changes and something we feel we can do.
I noticed in the contract, it said that we provide one and they provide one. Is that?
They provide the handicapped one and we provide the other.
Okay. Thank you for your work on this one.
The problem, I think it's a really favorable agreement, but thankful to the folks at Blacker and FCSA for allowing us to continue to use the facility.
Mr. Howell, are they still going to work on dugout?
Yeah, they're, they're almost complete.
Almost done, okay.
Brooks Concrete is doing that at cost and the structures are up, they're working on the roofs of the roofs of the two dugouts right now and then the top of the, I guess they call it the media building. But real nice concrete structures and definitely better than what you encounter in a lot of soccer fields now.
Okay, any other questions?
You did say students are not allowed in the field, so it's not that the tax army has screwed.
The managers, the soccer managers.
Yeah, right now, our boy soccer manager lines it, he does a good job.
And Brian Stockburger was also present at that meeting and was able to share from the maintenance department and how that impacted them. So I think we had a great representation at the meeting.
So mowing as needed.
Maybe once, maybe I answer through.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. So we need a motion to approve the soccer contract.
I believe we accept this new soccer contract.
Okay, motion by Jenny?
Second.
Second by Lisa, any other discussion? On favor? Okay, motion carries 6-0. Faculty and staff focus personnel report. Okay, we have one additional or two additionals. Adam recommends Sarah Reese for fax maternity leave position. This will be for Jennifer Snyder, who will begin on November, early on November 16th and March 11th. And we have Barbie Ruff for special needs, one-on-one at the middle school. Resignations, Melissa Carter, Columbia Instructional Assistant. Hiring's Amy Olinger, Riddle Special Needs Assistance, Instructional Assistant. Tara Mullin Cup, Riddle Cafe cashier. Nicole Tunis, RHS Cafe Food Service Assistant. Diane Weaver Gady, third grade maternity leave. Genevine Pittman, third grade maternity leave. Then two people taking maternity leaves, which would be Sarah Downs, January 21st through May 27th, 2016. Jennifer Snyder, November 16th through March 11th of 2016. Assignments, reassignments. Alan Sager, RMS English Academic Team Coach. Patty Brown, Columbia Full-Time Special Education, was a halftime. Melissa Oosley, Valpado, Columbia Title One Instructional Assistant. Tammy Paul, Highability K-12 Coordinator. Julie Calvert, Corporation Deputy Secretary, replacing Linda Melizer. And Wendy Bauer, RHS Cafe Manager. Any others?
That's it.
Motion to approve the personnel report.
Second that.
Okay, Brad, second Steve, any other discussion? On favor, Brad? Motion carries 6-0.
Good thinking.
Welcome, Julie.
Welcome.
Okay. Any other business?
Just a very quick reminder that our next lunch and learn with myself and two board members in this month, it'll be Ginny Smith and Tom Schwenk, will be at Mikey's at 11:30 this Wednesday and inviting the public to attend. It's a great time to ask questions, not only about the projects that we spoke about tonight, but any questions or concerns or comments that you might have in regards to the district and ideas, things that you want to share. It's a very open, informal kind of meeting time and we're hoping that those will begin to gain momentum and we'll have those communications with the public. And then one last reminder, in front of you, you should have folders. This contains information that we need all employees to go through and sign and sign off on. We don't have that from everybody, so we need you to go through and just document that you've read all of those procedures about blood form pathogens and acceptable technology use forms, all of those things. So if you could kindly do that and return it to the superintendent's office, that would be wonderful.
I already signed it for football, I'm going to say it again.
You already got it.
Let's do it again.
And that's all I have.
I have, I read it.
That's one of those one thing, reading inside.
Right, quite thoroughly, actually.
Anything else from the board? Anything else from the audience like that?
Oscar's packing up, heading out.
Not leaving, not leaving.
I was close, I was close.
Okay, thanks everybody for coming, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.[1788.12][1788.12][music]